We'll call our meeting to order. Mr. Secretary, would you please take role?
All board members are present.
Thank you. You'll please stand and join us with the pledge. Mrs. Nalls is going to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are very honored to have a distinguished mathematician with us this evening. Dr. Wall is going to lead us in a special presentation.
Thank you, Leila. Very pleased to have with us one of the math teachers from Carmel High School and Assistant Principal Joe Schaller here this evening to do the introductions. But we have the 2016 Edith May Award for Distinguished Mathematics Teaching at Carmel High School. Joe, would you come forward, please? And we'd also like to bring Linda Jones forward for the math department at Carmel High School. And Mr. Schaller will say a few words of detail about this award and Linda Jones.
We just want to recognize Linda. She won the Edith Slithy Award, which was given out or is given out for excellence in high school and middle school mathematics. She received the award for improvement of the high school competitive math team that they compete in a lot of competitions, national competitions, and have improved. And the award is also, in reading through it and understanding a little more about it, is the woman who presents the award or who it's named after also did many competitions and led students and often saw the kids receiving rewards and really felt that it was important that the teachers also got some recognition for it. So, very happy to recognize Linda Jones today for her receiving the award of the Edith Slithy.
Thank you.
Did I say something?
Sure. My name's Linda, and I am the sponsor of the Math Club at Carmel High School. And we compete year-round. We do lots of competitions, and we love competing. The kids just really light up, and they love going to different places to compete. We compete a lot online nationally, so it's really a lot of fun. And I, it's a highlight of my day to get together with these kids once a week and just to see how excited they are about math. So, it's a great thing.
That's great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Seeing that we do not have anybody wishing to speak during public participation, we'll move straight into consent. May I get a motion on the table to approve consent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And at this time, I will suspend a regular board meeting and open a series of four separate public hearings to allow public input regarding the proposed sale of obligation bonds. On July 25th, Mr. McMichael presented the proposal sale of general obligation bonds to be applied to the following projects and asked the board to authorize the administration to advertise for such public hearings. These projects include the technology upgrades in Carmel Clay Schools, the temperature controls at Creekside Middle School and Clay Middle School, as well as the painting and flooring projects at Carmel High School. And we'll begin with 1028 hearing. Roger.
Thank you. Our first hearing is with regard to the project at the high school. Any project that's expected to cost more than $1 million, it's a requirement to have a public hearing on that project to share with the public the tax impact of the project and also to describe the project and the need for the project. And so, this particular project is for flooring and finishes, mostly painting, of various areas of the building, and the budget for this project is $1,326,000. The financial impact is just a little over one-half of one cent to the tax rate, and the overall bond issue is just approaching two-and-a-half cents to the tax rate. And so, at this time, it would be the opportunity for any comment or input from members of the public.
At this time, I will offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments on a proposed painting and flooring project at the high school. And seeing that nobody is wishing to make a comment, this hearing is closed. The next three hearings...
Okay.
Go ahead, Brad.
The next three hearings are for additional appropriation. Each of the projects must have appropriation approved in order to be able to actually spend the money. And so, really, the three hearings are similar, except there's one hearing for each project that you previously described. And so, the first one, I believe, is, let's see which one that one is, for the technology is.
So, at this time, I'll offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments regarding the proposed additional appropriation of bond proceeds for the technology upgrades across the school district. Please approach the podium and share who you are and your interest.
Hello. My name is Cole Ferguson. I'm a senior at Carmel High School. And over the past four years going, I can attest that the Wi-Fi especially in certain areas of the high school, I don't know about all the middle schools, but is not the best. So, increasing the infrastructure spending, especially when it comes to Wi-Fi, which I believe is one of the major things, I think is, would be very beneficial to the high school, at the very least. I can't really attest for all the middle schools, but for the high school, I can. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Any other comments? At this time, I will close the hearing. At this time, I will open up the floor for public participation, an opportunity to make comments about the additional appropriation of bond proceeds for the Creekside Middle School and Clay Middle School temperature control projects. And seeing that we have no comments, this hearing is now closed. And we'll open up the floor to get one more hearing. This time, we'll offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments regarding the proposed additional appropriation of bond proceeds for the high school painting and flooring projects. Seeing that there are no comments, this hearing is also closed. So, being that hearings are closed, we'll move straight into action. It is time now to take action regarding the five resolutions, the Carmel High School project, the 1028 that we just officially discussed, and the bond resolutions. And we will take action on each one of these projects individually. So, at this point, I need you to have a motion on the table to approve the resolution regarding the Carmel High School project.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion on the table to approve the resolution regarding the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution on the additional appropriation for the technology updates?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion on the table to adopt the resolution on the additional appropriation for the temperature controls at Creekside and Clay?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And last, we have the adoption, I need a motion on the table for the adoption of the resolution on the additional appropriations for the Carmel High School projects.
Who?
Second?
Second.
Who, second? Pam? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. And next, we move to our change orders. And with that, we turn to Dr. or Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. These are two change orders totaling $36,985 for the, related to the new sports building at Carmel High School.
Thank you. May I get a motion on the table to approve the new sport, the change orders for the sporting complexes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Yes?
I do have a question, just to make sure I understand this correctly. So, the layman of Anderson's change, they've admitted it was their mistake, and they'll end up paying for the correction. So, does that mean, at the end of the project, we'll see a deduction for that $3,506? Does that how that works?
Correct. The credit will be given by the architect, however, not the contractor.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much for looking into that, Roger.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then, we're ready to take a vote. All those in favor of supporting the change orders for the new sport buildings at Carmel High School signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have our bus driver agreement. And to that, we turn to Mr. McMichael as well.
Thank you. We met with representatives of the Bus Drivers Association and came to a tentative agreement. This agreement is similar to the increase that was given to other support staff members, and the members of the association have approved this agreement, and so we would recommend it for your approval.
May I get a motion on the table to approve the bus driver agreement?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have our adoption of policies. And we have decided to lump these into one action since we spent a great deal of time reviewing them at the July 25th meeting. So, at this point, we'd like to have a motion on the table to adopt policies as listed.
Leila, I have a question with one of the policies.
Yes.
Do you mean to pull it out now?
Please do. Yes.
I'd like to pull out policy 5515, the criminal gang activity in schools, the first one listed. But I'll move to approve the other ones.
Okay. That sounds great. May I get a second on the approval of 0310, 2460, 4129, 6440, 6445, 6450?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have policy 5515. May I get a motion on the table to approve policy 5515?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
One quick question.
Yes, please.
It talks about towards the end, that the policy dictates that the school employees must report such activities. What kind of training will our volunteers receive? Will they receive, you know, to report to employee or how do our volunteers get to...
Would, when you say volunteer, can you give me, like, example?
Parents in the classroom or something like that, who might have...
Well, that would be something we need to do in the administrative guidelines, but that would be a loop we need to close to get some training to them as well.
Okay. That was my question.
Appreciate the question. That's a good question. Thanks.
I will follow up just ever so slightly. We do have the bullying video that all volunteers who go into the schools have to watch each and every year, and you have to sign off on that. And it also reviews how you go about reporting. So, they will have some exposure as to what you do as a volunteer when you see something happening. You're welcome. Any other questions or comments? Then, all in favor of supporting 5515, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. Next, we're moving into reports. And Mr. McMichael, you have got a handful for us.
I do. Thank you. Let's see. The first report I will present is the budgets for 2017. Board members also have a draft copy of the detailed budget. What I will go over in the PowerPoint is an overview. And if I may, I will begin with, okay. There we go. Noting that our budgets are actually made up of six funds. Oftentimes, the public assumes that we have a budget, but it's actually six different funds, a general fund and a referendum fund, which are both used for operating expenses, our transportation fund, bus replacement fund, our debt service fund to repay our debt, and then our capital projects fund. I'll start with the general fund and the referendum fund typically combine these two for presentation purposes because they're both used for operating funds. On the revenue side of these funds, the general fund is based on a state grant. This year, we are assuming 62 additional students, and in the fall, and this, the grant, by the way, is, or the formula is on a fiscal year, whereas our budget is on a calendar year. So, the revenue ends up a combination of two different formulas. We do not have a formula for 2017 and 18, so for purposes of our budget, I assumed a 2% increase in funding and then a corresponding 2% increase, approximately 2% increase in costs. We're assuming that our referendum fund will provide an increase of $400,000. On the expenditure side, our salaries being the largest area of expenditures, this budget reflects a 1.5% salary increase plus increment for 2016-17 as well as 2017-18. It also assumes a 1.5% performance bonus for eligible non-teachers and a 2.5% performance bonus for teachers. Last year, the teacher bonus comes from a state grant, and last year, that, the average amount was about 2%. So, it's increased this year to about 2.5%. With regard to benefits, we're assuming, in fact, we had no health insurance increase in 2016-17. It's worth noting that that's, this is the fourth year in a row that we have not had an increase, so we've not had an increase since 2012. We're very pleased with that. I am projecting a 5% increase in 17-18. Most, I don't have anything to base that on, other than trend is still near double digits, and I just don't know how much longer we can go on without an increase, so, you know, time will tell. But I said the very same thing last year, so, but we, fortunately, we didn't need an increase this year. With regard to non-personnel expenses, so-called non-controllable expenses, such as property insurance and utilities, are based on current trends, and the controllable expenses, like supplies and travel, we've increased 1.5%. With more detail with regard to revenue, the major forms of revenue are property tax and license excise tax for the referendum. We have miscellaneous revenue for student fees and interest investments and so forth. And then, the largest amount by far for the general fund is the basic grant. As the board knows, our general fund now is funded entirely from the state, does not include property tax. So, you can see, we're projecting revenue of just over $112 million. On the expense side, not surprisingly, salaries are a major expense at 70.6% of the entire budget, corresponding employee benefits are at 22.2% of the budget. We also have purchased services, and I would want to point out here that we have some good news with regard to cooling or heating and cooling on natural gas. We have a rate decrease this year of about 33%. Now, that doesn't mean that the gas cost will go down 33% because we buy the gas direct, and then it's delivered basically by veteran. So, their costs haven't gone down, but the portion of the total cost for the product itself has decreased this year. And so, we don't know what the weather will bring, so that's the other major factor in terms of what we actually spend. But certainly was good news to have a decrease of that significance. We did have, I think, a 10% increase in water and sewage, so that did go up a bit. But still, we're, we are doing very well with regard to the gas expense. With regard to instructional supplies, it's about 2.5% of our budget. I would point out, it's not a large item in terms of the entire budget, but you'll note under supplies for spatial programs, a significant increase there. That's related to spatial education, and we've had a couple of events that have caused that. However, it's 100% offset by additional revenue from the state. We have a second facility that moved into Carmel that's bringing more students into that facility, and of course, we get corresponding, we have to provide funding for that, but we also, those students, but we also get additional revenue. So, it's, it's, it's an increase, but it's offset by additional revenue. And then, you'll see here again on capital outlay, it's a very small portion of our budget, but that $100,000 is also related to spatial education. So, our total budget for these two funds, then, is $112,397,234. And as an overview, we started 2016 with just over a $9.4 million cash balance. That amount is higher than it would have been, except that, you recall that we paid retroactive pay for the teacher's contract in February. And so, we would have been under eight, under $9 million, had it not been for that retroactive pay. Another thing I would point out is, on the projected 2016 expenses, we are paying, in 2016, we will have paid two years of the performance bonus for teachers. That money is, was typically comes to us in November. Last year, it was delayed, and so, we made that payment in, I believe, February. And so, and then, we'll make another one. If the money arrives on time, we'll make another one in November of this year. So, later, you'll hear that we will be needing some additional appropriation, has no impact of the tax rate or anything, and we have the money. But again, we're now going to spend more money in 2016 than we would have had those events not occurred. And so, we're projecting about $8.8 million cash balance by the end of 2016. Then, for the 17 budget, we start with $8.8 million, revenues of just over $112 million. So, our projected ending cash balance is $8.5 million, slightly lower, but in the context of $112 million, we're essentially intending to, and projecting that we'll be even. It wouldn't be unlikely that we could have some appropriations left over in, at the end of that year, given the size of our budget. So, I'll go on to the next fund, then, with transportation. Like the general fund, it's based on, or, I'm sorry, not like the general fund, but it does have a formula. But this is, the revenue for this fund is primarily from local property taxes. This formula allows for a three-year average increase based on the assessed value. So, it's average, and then that drives the formula. On expenditures, again, in transportation, the majority of costs there is also personnel. And so, salaries there are projected to increase 1.5% as well. And the non-personnel items, which the largest one would be fuel, is based on the current trend. So, in this fund, we started with about a little over $400,000 of cash balance. We project that we'll end the year a little better than that, and that's primarily to the positive fuel prices that we're seeing these days. And then, we expect to end the year of 2017 about $560,000. So, we're, we're in good shape in transportation. We, that balance in previous years was a little higher, when, earlier when the fuel costs went up, the balance came down a bit, but now, it's beginning to recover. And we have the bus replacement fund. Again, revenues are primarily coming from property tax and excise tax. This year, we're planning on replacing 17 buses as part of our 12-year bus replacement And again, this, this fund started with a $202,000 cash balance, and we should end up about the same, but both at the end of 2016 as well as 2017. Regarding debt service, we have three leased rentals. Those are through a building corporation or a holding corporation. I'd point out that the second one, noted, it was issued in February of 2007. Last year, the board approved refinancing that bond issue again, and that will close, I believe, October the 20th, at which time, given your approval to proceed, the public will save about $5.5 million in, by lowering the interest on that bond. So, that's, I felt was worth noting. Then, you can see the three general obligation bonds issued in 14-15, and now, there's one we just talked about earlier. These are short-term bonds. I believe they're all four- or five-year bonds. It's not unusual to have bonds that would be for 20 years, but the bonds that we have sold are, are very short-term, which is, we think is appropriate, particularly when, in some cases, some of these funds we're using for technology, and we wouldn't want to have a debt that would last longer than the useful life of the technology itself. So, in this, the debt service fund allows for, our older debt, it allows for, to maintain an operating balance of 50% of the annual payment. More recent debt, the GO bonds, it's 15%. So, and we do tend to maintain that balance. It serves the purpose of cash flow for our other funds, since with tax, or funds that are supported by property tax, since most of that revenue is received is twice a year, and the expenses tend to be more constant throughout the year. We, this, having some, some cash in this fund helps us to not find it necessary to sell tax anticipation warrants. And so, that's one of the reasons why we carry that balance. Going on to our CPF, as a way of background information, we have 19 facilities, about $2.8 million, or $2.8, about $2.8 million square feet of space, and we own just a little over 700 acres with a value of just under $442 million. In accordance with law, the board must establish a three-year capital projects fund plan. The funding for the capital projects is controlled by a maximum tax rate, and our tax rate's just over 21 cents, which raises just over $14.5 million. And while we have a three-year plan, the budget portion of that is only for the first year. So, that is, that's the year we're going to set a tax rate that will ultimately result in, in receiving taxpayer funds. The second year and the third year are, of course, subject to change, and it's only during the current year that we actually establish a tax rate. So, again, for the capital projects fund, the revenue is coming primarily from property tax and excise tax. You can see the projected revenues, and likewise, the cash balance and the projected cash balance. I should point out here that with the capital projects fund, there are, we had some changes this year, some of which you heard about in terms, we, we had an increase in the circuit breaker. The state refers to it as a credit, as a governmental entity. We see it as a loss, because it is, in terms of the revenue. But, but in 2017, we're now required to, to anticipate that loss as a part of the forms and so forth. And in doing that, the state was required to provide us with estimates of the loss. And so, they have provided estimates, but we, we believe, and they acknowledge that they really are exaggerated. And it's not that they're doing anything wrong, it's just the first time they've gone through this process, and they don't want to underestimate. But where we anticipate that our loss will be about $2 million, they're assuming about $8 million. So, I mean, we're not even close. So, just as a part of the bureaucracy and the protection to ensure that the school district gets the maximum amount of funds that are available to us and that we'd otherwise be entitled to, we have included that large amount as we're required to. But we don't anticipate that we'll end up with $7.6 million of cash balances where I'm headed. Part of that is, and you can see, we started with 1.5. With construction projects, we will have cash at any given time, based on the progress of the projects, but, but we don't... of the projects, but, but we don't anticipate having that much. Uh-oh. That was actually the end, so. Back up. There we go. So with that, I'll respond to questions, but before that, I'll share that this is just the first meeting of three meetings relating to the budget. After this meeting, the next meeting, we will have a public hearing to, again, provide opportunity for the public to have input to our budgets. And then at the October meeting, October the twenty-fourth, is when we'll ask the board to adopt the budgets, as well as the bus replacement plan and the, and the capital projects fund plan.
Thank you, Roger. And I'm just going to jump on this last page, just for starters. Could you explain again the, the eight million dollar discrepancy?
Yeah, it's not discrepancy, but, but the process now requires that we, in our, in our forms that we submit to the state, that we include the anticipated impact of the circuit breaker. And so this is the first year that, that we've been required to do that. And so as a part of that new process, the state has provided us with estimates. But to ensure that, that they don't underestimate, they've, they have admittedly exaggerated the amount. And so a majority of what you're seeing there reflects that, that exaggeration. What we believe will happen is, is we will advertise the budget with these larger amounts, but then when they're actually approved, they'll have better insight as to what the circuit breaker is and so forth, and ultimately they'll know what it is. And then, and then they'll approve the budget accordingly. So it doesn't hurt anything, but it, it results in the expenditures looking to be larger than what we think they will be.
Thank you. Kathy.
Would it be possible for us to get a copy of this presentation?
Yes, I'm sure if we gave you that or not, but yes, you can. We'll definitely get that to you.
Yeah, what we've done in the past is post it the day after this.
Other questions or comments from the board? And we do have lots of opportunity to share questions via email and at subsequent board meetings as well. Well, great. Well, thank you very much, Roger. I appreciate especially the summary that you provided with the PowerPoint. Then moving right along, a monthly financial update.
If I might interject before Roger begins, this is a follow-up to the board retreat as we look at ongoing review of district budget and finance. We see this as an important component for report from Roger as treasurer to the board, and so we see this as an ongoing monthly report. Roger's put together a format that I think that we've reviewed that is informative, instructive, and, and really kind of gives a, you know, kind of school finance one-on-one. But we're also open to any insights and thoughts that you might have. So with that, Roger, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. This is for the first six months, so we're actually a month delayed. Next month, you'll, let's see, in September, so you will see, it will bring it up to August, end of August. So you can see that so far through June thirtieth, you'll see the property tax coming in, and that, again, that's, and the financial institution tax and the license excise tax, those are all related to our referendum fund, and then the state grant is the general fund, and then other is, is fees and various miscellaneous revenues that are coming in. And so by June thirtieth, we, you can see the, the total amount of funds by that point is just over fifty-five million dollars. And that's, in comparing it to the approved budget, we, we're at forty-nine percent. And so then the revenues below are categorized by the major categories, which I presented to you in the budget presentation, of salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, and other. And you'll note there that under the full year where the budget, the combined budgets are a hundred and nine million, four forty, the budget presentation I just gave you has that numbered about a hundred and eleven. And as I said previously, that's, we will ask for additional appropriation, mostly reflecting the fact that we had retroactive pay this year, and we will have, by November, we will have, have two years of performance bonuses expended in this one calendar year. And you'll note at the bottom, in January, January's a three-pay month, thus the salary and benefits were eleven percent. February, at ten percent, reflects the retroactive pay that we made, and we see eight percent going pretty consistently after that. And so that's really about it on this financial report.
Go ahead, Pam.
Yes, can you explain again why we have two years of performance grants in one year?
Yes, because fifteen, the grant for fifteen sixteen, which was scheduled to be received by the school corporate, the funding to be received by the school corporation in November was delayed, and we did not receive it until February. So that put it into the same fiscal year, but it moved it into, from a budget, our budget process, which is on a calendar year basis, moved it into 2016, where it otherwise would have been paid in fifteen. And then assuming we receive the sixteen seventeen grant on time in November, then we'll pay it out as soon as we get it, and thus, that will be the second payment. So we're paying fifteen sixteen and sixteen seventeen in calendar year sixteen. Things are a little confusing now, because the state, a few years ago, went to doing the formula on a, on a July one to June thirtieth basis, but we continued to build the budgets on a calendar year basis. The state's on a, on a July one, June thirtieth, but all of our funds, except the general fund, are, are supported by property tax, which as you know, is on a calendar year basis, not a, so we've got a combination of, of revenue coming in on one, in one stream, and, and we're building expenses on a, on a calendar year basis. So we have to combine basically two fiscal years on revenue to incorporate that into a calendar year budget.
Kathy.
Roger, can you, let me, inform you, I don't know, where is the referendum fall in our receipts? Which, which category is the referendum amount? In the property tax?
Yes, the referendum is, is property, as far as revenue, is property tax, financial institutions tax, license excise tax, and C-Bet tax.
And about what percentage of our income is, comes from our referendum?
Close to fifteen percent, about thirteen or fourteen, I would say. And a hundred and twelve million dollars, we're getting about fifteen million of that in referendum, so it's a significant portion of our operating expenses.
Because I believe at the retreat, one of the things we wanted to make sure we were, were aware of is how important that referendum really is to Carmel Clay Schools.
It's vital.
And I think this reporting mechanism highlights that. Thanks, Kathy.
Other questions or comments? Great, thank you very much, Roger. We really appreciate this. This is a fantastic summary.
Thank you.
And next, we have superintendent's report. Dr. Wall.
Thank you. As we've done in the past, we look at the draft workshop topics for the year, and as we've done the last couple of years, we connect them back to the strategic initiatives that we're doing, and some of the work that's being done in our buildings in conjunction and in concert with the strategic initiatives. As we look at these, these all connect to that. We've done the legislative priorities, we kicked off every, in August. What we're going to suggest with September, October, that's why we put draft on this, as you remember last year, we covered all the topics, but we, we ask for your patience to juggle them as it becomes more time-sensitive and actually convenient for our building administrators to be here. So with that said, the high school is going to report in September on college and career readiness, and we're going to move Lucy Cawkins riding back to October. We're just going to flip-flop those two for availability. Very excited then to come in November, have LMS implementation update to the board as we kick off and have the, the learning year for Canvas for all of us, for our teachers and our students and our families. Very excited that we have middle school STEM going in all three campuses. I've had the pleasure of being in our middle schools this year, and seeing the excitement and the real shift from what we've done in the past to that elective to STEM is just so exciting. It's just, it's time. We're continuing to promote innovation and creativity with our, with our maker spaces and other areas in our instruction, so we'll have a February presentation on that. As we did last year, we looked at the ensuring academic growth of all students, as we look at well-being of our students and meaningfully engaging all of our student populations. This year, we want to look at intervention, B and L Abbott and our senior year schedule, how's that going? We're very excited that we had, I have a number for that. One hundred and eighty-eight students have enrolled in the senior schedule at Carmel High School this year. That's exciting. That goes into our flexible scheduling initiative and our strategic plan, so we will come back in March and give the board a status, how is that going? And we're excited to, to be giving that opportunity, to expand our opportunities for our seniors. April is math program evaluation, and then June we'll look at integrating technology into daily instruction, which, as you know, has been our C4 initiative for the past couple of years, and that initiative continues to grow in Carmel Clay Schools. So we're excited for these workshop topics, we're excited that they're connected back to our strategic plan, and they're meaningful, and you will be seeing many of our teachers and administrators presenting these workshops as we've done in the past.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wall. Does anybody have any comments or other items that they're looking for? Pam, go ahead.
Yes, now that I'm looking at the workshop topics, I was wondering if, in the middle of the year, we can get a short report on the integration of technology, since that has, is a big push this year, and we're implementing funds at the beginning of the year or two. I want, I want to see how the technology is being used in the classrooms, and how the, how it's going with the teachers, because they're getting the new instruments, I mean, the new.
Devices.
Devices, yes.
What we could do with the November, the LMS implementation, just give a status report on that?
Okay.
How's that?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you bet.
Kathy.
Man, I may have forgotten this, but have we gotten any update on the numbers at the building yet, or do we usually do that in September?
We, we don't do that till ADM Day in September, correct.
All right.
Other comments or questions or ideas on our workshop topics? As we work through the school year, if there are things that come up that you really'd like to have more information, send any of the Dr. Wall or myself or the entire board. We can always integrate that as even a board report or a report to the board, not necessarily an entire workshop topic. So please feel free to, to share those ideas.
And that's a good point. We've, we've done board reports in the past, too, in addition to these specific workshop topics, and we'll continue to do that.
Next on our list, we have our legislative priorities. We had a great discussion at our last meeting as our, our workshop topic, and I know Tricia's been working hard on collecting additional information, and Mike and other board members have made comments to help us really pull together some great ideas. So with that, Tricia, please go ahead.
Thank you. As Leila said, we used our last workshop to really pull together, look at ISBA's proposed foundational statements and their legislative priorities for the next year, looked at some of our past Carmel Clay legislative priorities, and then discussed some current needs here in Carmel, in our district, and kind of pulled all that together. So with that information, I went home and pulled together a draft, and that is what is up here. But in the meantime, as things move really fast, even before our legislative session has begun, actually, I wanted to still use this as a base, and I created this draft, actually, with three things in mind: state funding, local control, and transparency seem to be really important issues throughout the board discussion. So that's what I created that out on. And then I went ahead and made a paper copy for everyone on the board, and Dr. Wall, and as a good special, former special ed teacher would do, it's color-coded, and the green is information I've gotten since then, basically through conversations with Dr. Smith of ISBA, and some newspaper articles and things like that. And then blue would be, in response to that, suggestions I might have to changes, and of course, not too many, because it's the draft I pulled together, so. And then, and actually, I would say some of those green comments, too, have to do with, Pam wasn't able to be here in our workshop conversation two weeks ago, but she has given some input, too. So some of that's pulled in. I was able to ask Dr. Smith some of those questions. And then Mike, over the weekend, had some suggestions, so I put those in in red. So that's where we get a little rainbow here in front of us. And then what I'll try to do is, for everyone in the room and watching on TV land later on, I'll try to follow along on this piece here. So with just some comments, I will not read the whole thing. What are you laughing at? So with that, Carmel Clay, two thousand seventeen, two thousand seventeen legislative priorities, which was mirrored with our title in the past, one of Mike's suggestions is to say the Carmel Clay Schools, which I think that actually helps delineate and be even more transparent, so I think that's really nice. With this draft, I divided our goals into three areas: funding, referendum, and state testing, student testing. Under funding, we have two areas of importance. One mirrored, one of the priorities of ISBA in not only making sure our state fully funds mandated programs, but specifically professional development days for our staff that fall out of the one hundred and eighty days. As, as that is a requirement and a push from the state, it would be really nice to have that, that funding come from the state, too, so that we can carry that out more easily and more thoroughly. This was really interesting, so, and I kind of missed something, too. We kind of, we started with our, the board wanted to start with some kind of statement, and I kind of went between two things. Do I start with our mission statement? Or if you see up on our guiding principles, our first one really says it all, and that all of our decisions are student-centered. And I kind of went between the two, and then luck of the draw, one of Mike's first suggestions is to kind of change the wording for that A priority to state, "While students are at the center of every decision, funding is a critical issue for Carmel Clay Schools. The state should provide funding for professional development and in-service programs that may be conducted beyond the one hundred and eighty school day year," or "school year." So that was to me a perfect way to pull that in, and thanks for solving my dilemma, if the rest of the board supports that later on. And with that, this is what happens, is especially with the unfunded mandates, and Nick and I found this in our conversations last year, things come up, and lo and behold, the middle of the month of August, Representative Benning announced his intent to propose and expand background checks for teachers and staff to every five years, but I never saw anything with funding being attached to that. So that would be another example of, of, of an interesting idea, but let's make sure there's funding attached. So I think what will end up is we'll follow some other issues, even though our main priority is the professional development. Another one that, the data reporting committee that I'm on is following in very closely is the annual financial report and the annual progress report requirement to include publication in a printed newspaper. This is very expensive for schools, as reports are, at least at this point, very long, and, and it's really not how the majority of our community gets their information, they go to our website. And so if we are at a tight funding situation here in Carmel, and really across the state on districts, it's, it's an unfunded mandate to put the pressure of funding newspapers out of the general fund budget of schools. So, you know, that's kind of important, too. And that is actually a hot political button, because a lot, there are several key legislators who, it's their priority, nothing against newspapers at all, I actually get the printed newspaper, but I just don't think it should be on the backs of the budget of schools. So that would be something else we would follow in there. B, under the funding, we address the, depending on the type of capital project it is, construction project, there's two different thresholds, a two million dollar and a ten million dollar threshold, that if a construction project hits that, then there's a certain process that needs to, that gets triggered, that has to do with petitions, remonstrance, and referendum. And ISBA is proposing their priority specifically said to reflect cost of living increase. Roger was saying. priority specifically said to reflect cost of living increase. Roger was saying they're kind of low to begin with, but in talking with Brian Smith, he said really what they're going to ask is that the $2 million threshold equal a $5 million, and the $10 million be changed to a $15 million. So I propose, actually, I suggest, that we look at changing our legislative priority to match those specific numbers, and then include the codes, which are in our paperwork up here. And you probably don't really care exactly what the codes are. So to kind of reflect that in there. And that'll take us down to C, our third financial, our funding-related legislative priority, to make permanent the ability to pay general fund utilities and property casualty insurance through our capital projects fund. And Brian Smith and I talked a little bit about this. He had a lot of background on that. Specifically, this process has been allowed to continue for about 11 years now, but how it's been passed is that it's only passed for two years at a time, that it sunsets every two years. And so we are kind of held up, like, think this is going to be, this flexibility is going to be in our budget, but we don't know for sure. We asked last year for the legislature to look at this to be permanent, and we asked that again. At this time, across the state, this amount of money represents about $112 million, according to Dr. Smith. And so that would be a cost to schools that would be really hard to replace if this flexibility is not put in permanently. So I did not know how much the money that hit all across the state. Something that Pam had brought up was to relook at the formula. It's a formula from 2005 that uses 3.5 percent of, you know, another number to calculate the formula. So I asked Dr. Smith about that, and he wanted to look at that, too. He said that is an interesting, you know, it's old numbers to use for a formula, but that ISBA's thought was to concentrate on making this permanent, and that, and there was a couple other elements that might be things to look into in the future as possible legislative priorities. That's ISBA's thought. So wanted to put that out there. So then, and this is just how I divided this up, we had a couple priorities after a referendum topic, and we've kind of divided these in accurate ballot language, and then another one on other issues, whereas ISBA tended to make one a capital referendum and one an operational referendum. But that's just, we really were on the same line on how those things went. According to our first one, what hit us wrong is that ISBA seemed to look at, their legislative priority emphasized changing the language for capital project referendums. Last year, the legislature did address some of the operational referendum language and make that a little bit more transparent. We thought in our discussion it was really more of a first step and not really a full solution. And in talking with Brian Smith, he agreed 100% on that and liked that we were emphasizing that, too. So they might actually relook at that. And I'm not sure how much is Brian relooking or their legislative priority committee relooking, but he was very interested in how we went about that. And then, for those with the paper, you know, make sure you note that the red, Mike's changes, you got the red at the end, to put in there. That was some good information. Then B, to kind of go along with the ISBA legislative priority, right now, referendums can be passed for up to seven years. And what it was discovered kind of last year by default was that that does not align up with general election cycles, which makes places like Carmel have to ask for special election because we're on an off year. So we need to right that wrong there. ISBA wanted to go from seven years to eight years. That gets, you know, that moves up and it keeps in that election cycle because it's an even year. We wanted to go for 12, because 12 years represents the life of a student, give or take, and that made sense to us, asking for money for students. Brian Smith explained to me the reason seven, seven or eight, which is close to seven, is used is that a lot of legislators equate seven years with the elementary life of a student. However, he loved that we were going for 12, and gave us kudos for that and said, you know, again, I think we might look at that. You guys have some good explanation behind that effort there. And note Mike's thoughts there on that one, on B. And then, student testing, which I did on this draft as a third goal. Basically, it was just greater emphasis on benchmark testing throughout the year, which is formative testing, instead of the big summative testing at the end. Brian Smith and I talked a bit about that No Child Left Behind mandated tying teacher evaluations to the test scores, but every student's CDAC does not. And so actually, us pulling out and including to not tie that so much to the teacher evaluation is really something our legislature has to look at because Indiana law is not quite in line anymore. So that was really a nice timely pullout. He was also very glad that we actually pulled that out from, ISBA had it as one of their foundational statements, but he liked that we pulled that out so that it catches our legislators' eye, the student testing and the importance of that. And then, just to note, that Mike had some suggestions on kind of reshuffling and really making them two different distinct priorities: student testing first, and then funding, and then laying them out a little differently. I looked at that, actually, personally, I'll just throw that in there as pros and cons. I don't want the referendum things to get lost because that's really important to Carmel, but that is something for the board to look at and then provide feedback. And then, of course, Mike also said, you know, we should at the bottom put adopted and the date. So when we adopt this in the end of whatever forum, at the end of September, that's a, you know, a really good thing to put down there. And so that's that on our draft. And I just wanted to hit a couple things on the ISBA legislative foundational statements that Brian gave me some clarification on. This one, this new one that they added in here, the ISBA supports the current flexibility to adjust the beginning and closing hour of the school day due to student safety concerns. Last session, Representative Jeff Thompson, who's on the Ways and Means Committee and the Education Committee, introduced a bill that two-hour delays must be made up. And ISBA jumped right in, worked with certain legislators, and finally got that to apply pressure and finally get that eventually withdrawn. But Dr. Smith feels that's going to be reintroduced this year. So that's something just to keep our eye on, I think, not necessarily to add to our priorities, but something to keep our eye on. The next area I want to call your attention to actually goes to the ISBA proposed legislative priorities, and here they are here. This number two, we had a bit of discussion about this. Tax credits should be allowed for donations made to public schools and public school foundations. So talked a bit about this with Brian Smith. Indiana currently allows donations to voucher of private schools to be rewarded with a 50% tax credit and federal and state tax deductions, all of it. And right now, that's unlimited. Right now, in Indiana, if you give money to a public school, if that same donor chooses to give their money to a public school or a public school foundation, they get zero of that tax credit and only the deductions, the tax deductions. ISBA's thought is to mirror that, to mirror one to the other, so that it's the same. And he gave some examples, and one, people at the paper have, you know, an extreme example, but something that could be done right now and shows that the law needs tightening up, that a parent could donate $100,000, virtually, let's say, their whole income, to their son's private school, receive $50,000 tax credit back, qualify as low income, and then receive financial-based scholarship for the son. So there's some areas that aren't really thought through all the way, yet if you want to give that same donation to a public school, you get zero tax credit. So I would suggest that the, you know, the board relook at that as maybe one of our priorities, since funding is a challenge for us, and we're looking at a variety of ways to support our funding, that maybe some email chatter and such to see where we are, we fall on that. And then, at the very end, I wanted to point out, because we looked at this, their eighth priority, the collective bargaining allow MOUs or, why can't I think of MO, yeah, memorandum of understandings at any time during the year, if the board and the exclusive representative agree to a mid-year contract adjustment. And Nick and I, when we talked to legislators last year, had gotten some not positive feedback from different case scenarios. So we, as a board, discussed it and pulled that out of our priorities. But, and I said to Dr. Smith, we were kind of surprised to see that. His explanation was that IERB actually applied pressure to some legislators last year to rally against this, which might have been why we heard some of that. But in ISBA's eyes, this speaks to local control, and that both parties would need to agree, anyway. So I just throw that out there as a further explanation. I don't know if that raises to a priority for us right now, but, you know, something to track and keep our eye on for possibly revisit in the future. And then, just in addition to that, Mike had brought up maybe looking into kindergarten funding, and lo and behold, the ISBA Legislative Committee did look into that being a priority. And when Dr. Smith checked into things, the Indiana Department of Ed reported back that actually kindergarten is considered fully funded as of July 1, 2016. So whether it fully covers, you know, one district's kindergarten costs and another district's kindergarten costs, but that for them, then, it didn't raise to the level of priority. And then, just of note, Representative Tim Brown, who is the Ways and Means Committee Chair, he intends to introduce a bill supporting education savings account. And you might have read about this in the newspaper. And this is where every family would get a debit card to use at any school and for certain educational costs. So Brian Smith went and talked to representatives from states who've gone to the system. There are a few states that go to the system, and he found very few positives from the people he talked with. It's kind of a mess what people are wanting to use it for. And so where one person might submit it for one thing, then it's not okay, or it is okay, and it's taking staff time to sort all that out, and which is, time is money. So this might just be another area where we keep our eye on, and how that develops, because obviously it affects funding and our, you know, cost of doing business, I guess. So, that's a long report. I'm sorry, but I know we're still in the middle of drafting. I guess if there's any, you know, quick questions, otherwise, I think we've had such a good discussion last time that it's, we're pretty much on target, which is some tweaks that I think can be handled mostly on email, and then hopefully by my next report, we'll have basically down to our final draft, I think.
Thank you, Trish. I really appreciate you pulling this all together in one document. You have all of the, you know, everybody's feedback, and especially the conversations you had with Brian Smith. Those explanations are extremely helpful.
He was really helpful. And I want to say, you know, as in the past, like last year, I would send it out when I got back from the meeting. I'd send my report, and I'll do that, too, so you guys, I'll have electronically, quick, little tap of the button. So, that's it.
Okay, so what are you looking for from the board before the next meeting?
If you can go through this, because I know, like I said, sometimes things move last minute, which is why I usually don't give you the report beforehand, because sometimes it's still changing right before. But if you can kind of go through this now, I mean, I know you've had Mike's suggestions for, you know, a day or two at this point, and some of these other thoughts, and then you might have additional thoughts. So just kind of tweaks. I like this idea. I don't like this idea. How about adding this in here? And, you know, we'll kind of go back and forth for the next two weeks, I think, and then I'll pull something together for my next report.
Okay, Mike, I think you had something to share as well.
Yeah, I guess, first of all, I'd like to say, I really liked putting our mission statement up at the top. I think that's an important message. I also think any place that we can refer to the Indiana Code sections, which you've already done, is very helpful and very important. I agree with you that we should add something about tax credits as a priority, and maybe what we should do is word it to the district or its foundation, because that might get more support from either parents and/or legislators. And then, just hearing this education savings account scares me a little bit. And I've looked quickly, Representative Brown, Representative Boone, typical canoe in Montgomery County, and so that's pretty close to home. We don't, I'm not suggesting we do anything with our legislative priorities, but that's just something that we need to look out for. And I think when we do talk with legislators, be ready to give our opinion if that does come back this year.
And being that close, well, because of his position, he is one that we actually send a request to meet with. So maybe we'll really watch that closely and see if we can get his ear.
Trisha, what do you know about that educational savings account? Who funds that? Do I fund that for my child, or is the state funding that per, for each student?
I don't know much about it at all. I mean, it's not drawn up in legislation yet, so I think that's something to keep an eye on, and I don't even know how, I don't know what other states actually use it. So I don't know how they have it set up, or if they all have it set up kind of similarly. I don't know any of that. But I think if and when legislation's drawn up, then we'll know more about that. And maybe even actually, like, David Day or somebody that can chime in and help us translate that.
Okay, Pam?
Yes, as to the tax credits, I know what Mike said, but I think we're looking at legislative priorities that are specific to our school district and things that we feel are important. And I think the tax credit would be a statewide effort that ISBA should pursue, and that wouldn't necessarily be something that we would look at as a school district that's important to us. So, but I think as a state, this is horrendous, and somebody better be doing something about that.
Any other comments? Okay, then, Trisha, we will provide feedback to you.
Thanks. Thanks, everybody.
And goodness gracious, excuse me. And once again, thank you. And moving right along, any other announcements for the general public or for board members? Well, wonderful. Our meeting is adjourned.